From the movie set director. So, welcome to committee the whole and the first item would be adoption agenda. There is one small change. We're going to have Maria Lockley and Daniel Kuzaro from B.C. Transit present first as the first allegation. They have to be somewhere else at five o'clock. I believe their presentation is ready to go. So move adoption agenda on that basis, please.
Move.
All those in favor?
You're all right.
Welcome to the presenters from B.C. Transit. And as with all presentations, allegations here this afternoon, we have a time limit. So hopefully you keep within that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilor. Thank you for meeting with the local hangars. My name is Daniel Kuzaro. I'm the Senior Regional Transit Manager from B.C. Transit based down in Victoria. This is Maria Lockley. She's a Stevie planner who's in charge of the Transit Future Plan. Many of you have met her at the CBLD board meeting in and around Comox and Comox Valley. So what we're just going to do is here, we've been asked to come down and present where we are with the Transit Future Plan specifically with regards to the needs of Comox Valley or Comox Town. There's a follow-up meeting, as many of you are aware, on 29th April, we'll be presenting to the whole group. So this is really a chance for us to just talk to you guys about how we see transit going forward here in Comox and just if you have any questions, you know, specifically to particularly the economic development, I mean, specific how transit relates. I'm not going to say too much more to us. I'm going to pass over to Maria, who's going to take you through where we are.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity today. As you can see, I'm resting my consultation here. We actually kicked off the second round of the public consultation here and we started off in Cumberland this morning. We had a great turnout of people coming back to see what's happened with the planning that we've been doing over the last eight or nine months here. So I'll move right along. So what I'm going to do is because we have sent you a fairly comprehensive package of the Transit Future Plan and the process behind it and some supporting information there, I'm just going to briefly go through what the outcomes have been. So what we're looking at, we're looking at four Transit Future network layers essentially. We're looking at the frequent transit network, the local transit network, the targeted transit network, and the custom transit network. The most important one, the one that has the greatest impact on Comox obviously, is the frequent transit network. A lot of the feedback that we had from the community is they wanted a direct frequent route to move between the key centers and Comox obviously is one of the key centers. And we have a lot of people that are moving in and moving out of the Comox area on a regular basis for work, school, and to access the other shopping areas around them. So the frequent transit route, as you can see, there is a blue line on the map. The first phase of it would move between the key centers of Comox, North Island College, downtown Courtney, and then to either Driftwood Mall or Anfield Mall. We're not quite sure where it will anchor yet. That's part of the public exercise that we're undertaking to see whether we've got the anchor point right at Driftwood Mall or down at Anfield Center. The second phase would be in the long term to expand the frequent transit network down through Cumberland. And this would only happen if demand was established here. And we heard from them this morning that there is a growing demographic there. There will be a growing demographic of youth there, that we will be having more transit riders in the area there, as well as the growing number of seniors in that area as So if we look at the frequent transit route there, I've highlighted there, what I've looked at, I've looked at the 400 meter walking catchment that would be around the frequent transit route in the key centers at the moment. And as you can see, 56% of the residents in Comox would actually have 400 meter walking access to their frequent transit route. And what's more important as well, as you look at the Courtney residents and the Cumberland residents, because they're the ones coming into Comox, coming into the doctors, to the other professions here, et cetera. And we heard that this morning from the Cumberland residents, that a lot of them come down into Comox to come to professional appointments, et cetera. So there is that need to make sure that we are getting that key connection. So the frequent transit route essentially will provide 15-minute service in the peak and 30-minute service throughout the day. And we would look to extend that type of service, say, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. at 9:00. And it is the core of the network here in the whole of the Comox Valley. The local transit network would then basically evolve around that. We have a fairly robust local transit network here in Comox at the moment, in Courtney and in Cumberland. And once we've established the frequent transit route, we could then look to see how the local transit routes could change around that. So importantly, what I'm going to point out here today is we're looking at expansion of the local transit network in the areas of Buckston and Dexter mistake here. And we're also looking at, I think it's on my next slide, which is a direct airport ferry service from downtown Comox. So that's where we'd love to see how these local routes would develop in the future for Comox. So just an example here of looking at the local transit network and how would we develop around that. So you see the blue line moving through the key centers, which would be your frequent transit route. You're looking at a local transit route that could possibly basically be looking at the current route we have in the system, but circulating around Comox, giving the residents of Comox an easy access to a local network, and then giving them direct access to perhaps Driftwood Mall instead of going to downtown Courtney, because the frequent transit network would already do that for them. This would be more of a circuitry type system down in Comox directly out to Driftwood Mall. We have heard that from a lot of residents, that they would actually prefer a more direct route from Comox down to that shopping area. And then looking at a local transit network route that could be considered in the future as the future transit network develops from Comox to the airport to the ferry in return. So you could move people from the ferry services and from the airport to downtown Comox as a direct route rather than having them transfer, exchange, et cetera, and move on into Courtney. And obviously, we would then also couple that with a direct network from downtown Courtney to the airport as well. The targeted transit network, it's important that we consider the system as a regional system as well. We're not just looking at that downtown, the urban center area. We are looking at those important connections for those that live on the extremities of the region, being up in the settlement areas of Saratoga Beach and down in Union Bay. So we're looking at how we move to facilitate services in the rural areas and in these new community areas as the area develops. I've highlighted here some of the transit network infrastructure that we'd be looking at. So we've been looking at the exchange areas of downtown Courtney, downtown Comox, North Island College, where the Comox Valley Hospital is, near Aquatic Center, and the Anfield Driftwood Center. So basically, where we would need to see people moving in and off buses and where the greatest destinations are as those key centers develop. So the downtown Comox, we look at an exchange which includes bike storage, a kiss and ride, driving facilities, and services would possibly terminate here as well, because it's the end anchor point of the frequent transit network. A lot of people on the bus today actually said, "Kiss and ride, what does that mean?" Essentially, a kiss and ride is a term we use for where we're exchanging modes. So whether it's bicycles or whether it's people being dropped off in cars, et cetera, it's where you can exchange from one mode to another mode. And kiss and ride is simply just a fun term we use to say, "Well, see you later," and you're putting someone on the bus service if you're going in an opposite direction. So we've sent you a video which basically asks you to consider two questions and respond by 25th of April if you feel you have a desire to respond to these. And then we can get down to the forum where we're actually getting some targeted discussion around the Transit Future Plan and what the material is we're taking out to the public over this week to get their feedback about what their priorities are and where we should start stepping this network over the next five years. So that's the presentation for today. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Questions then from members of council? And of course, we will have the opportunity at the forum as well. Go ahead.
I just have one. If we manage to get some development down here on our waterfront, would it be possible to have the bus go down and turn around down on the waterfront and come back up?
It may be possible. What we've got to look at is the terminology frequent means moving people in the most direct frequent route that we can. And whenever we're extending that route, to see how many minutes that adds on to a trip and over an annual period, how much that adds on to the annual cost. But it's not something that we would not consider. It's something that we would simply see where the importance is of doing that in the system.
So is this plan going to be carved in stone?
No.
So we don't have to, and it's premature to have the bus to come down there now, but I can see that in a couple of years, it might be an option we would certainly want to explore.
What could work more effectively as well is that when Maria talks about the local routes, that is served by the local route and that brings people up, obviously because the steeness of going up brings them up to the current network. It's just as soon as you start taking two or three requests to come off a frequent transit network, you're nullifying the frequent transit network, you know, because you're slowing that bus down from giving a quick service from here into connecting everywhere else.
All right. All right.
Yes, and thank you. And I look forward to the forum later. And it's not just a function of route, it's also timing, how the bus is going to come. What do you see as the likelihood of more and more frequent bus times from now and when you look at the city, you get a totally different picture from here, but it seems that frequency in terms of times, one of the major factors that gets people on a bus and using it as well.
The whole platform of a frequent network is obviously to provide a short frequency in the peaks. And those peaks may be slightly different here in Comox Valley than they are, say, in larger city area, because we've seen a lot of the peaks sometimes might be in the middle of the day, where the seniors want to move around and do their shopping as well. So we look to see where you might not necessarily have to look at a rider's guide or look at the timetable to get a bus, you'll know that it will turn up and something in the peak should turn up in the next 10 to 15 minutes for you to hop onto. During the day, we look to say 30-minute type frequency on a frequent route. So you'd be sort of switching buses backwards and forwards between the key centers. And if you're running the local network around that, you might have a frequency of an hour or less in the work so that people who've got all the time, they choose to say, "Well, okay, well, I might wait for that local route that goes from Comox down to Driftwood Mall rather than in on that frequent route that's moving around." So we actually did an event at North Island College last week, well before the college took up for fourth semester. And it was interesting what the students had to say. There was a lot that said they would like to move from this area in Comox down to get up to the college, and it's not that great service at the moment for getting there for the lecture times that they have. We don't have sufficient service going to the college from down in the Comox that the students can use this area as a choice of living as well. Basically, that is a great time just to tell you have that, but not just for going to school, but there's been all the other things that they like to do around the valley as well.
And is there any hope that at some time you can have on the bus stop, the actual time table, that you can?
It's on your smartphone.
Mine's not very smart.
That's the way it's going.
Well, that's something certainly that we can do. We'd have to work with the staff here in Comox to implement that. I think it's going to be under our whole branding. So if that's something the staff can do, we've done it in a lot of places where we actually put posters with the schedule number.
Here.
Just a quick comment. I don't want to talk about kiss and ride, but bike and ride is, what I've seen is more and more people that like their bike and ride. But to my knowledge, the racks on any buses in the transit system in B.C. only hold two bikes. We need an inventor to come up with some kind of rack or some creative way of handling more than two bikes. I'll just add that, but I've heard that from lots of people.
We hear that a lot, too. We hear that around the region a lot, particularly where we've got people coming from a lot of rural areas on our regional services. If I had the time, I'd probably like to invent myself, because it'd be quite a weird thing. But yeah, but more importantly, if we can't have an invention that's on the bus, we've got to have that invention, that security that people have to be able to lock their bikes up and have that connection between, well, this is the transfer point, we're going to park your bike, and you know that when you come back, it should still be there and it's going to be in good condition as well.
And just to mention sort of that, B.C. Transit runs a shelter program where we cost share roughly 50% of when these exchanges are going in. A good example is in Sook, where part of the exchange building is actually bike lockers, where you can lock the bike undercover completely away. So as we go through the process, that's another chance because a little bit of elements can work for us for us to, you know, cost share in the improved facility, you know, infrastructure facilities.
All right. Anything further? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, and we're glad to see you on the 20th.
You will.
Thank you.
Next up is Corey Vanderhorst from Myers Mars Penny regarding the town of Comox. I think you're going to be a little bit more.
Thank you. I think I'll just wait a sec for the technical tech to talk with me.
Yeah, no worries. I mean, we do have your presentation in our package as well, so.
Okay, great. There we go. So we're going to talk to you today about our audit and the financial statements. We will go through. There we go. We'll look at the statements, some highlights of those statements. We'll talk about the audit process a little bit, confirm our independence as an audit firm. And then we'll look at some financial analysis like we've looked at the last few years around flexibility, sustainability, and vulnerability indicators at the town. So starting with the financial statement highlights, we look at the statement of financial position, so that snapshot of assets and liabilities at December 31st, 2013. The town had cash and investments of $19.7 million. The long-term debt was $2.45 million that's being paid down on schedule. Total liabilities were $14.6 million. So when we take the liquid assets and subtract off those liabilities, you get a net financial asset number of $6.6 million. So that is a good position to be in. It's not a debt position. You have more liquid assets than liabilities. The tangible capital assets, physical assets, items in the ground, water, sewer, buildings, things like that are $80.6 million. And the accumulated surplus of the town is now up to $87.5 million, which you can see that most of that is tied up in the physical assets. The statement of operations showing how the town did for the year. Total revenues were $21 million. That is up from last year and that is above budget. Total expenses were $17.2 million, again, an increase from the prior year and up from the budget number. So the annual surplus at the district was $3.77 million, and that is a book or accounting number. We'll look at the cash flows in a couple of slides to see what happened with cash at the town. This slide breaks up or breaks down where the revenue is coming from. So you can see the two largest areas where the town is generating revenue is from taxes and sales services, water, sewer, and utilities, things like that. The next slide looks at expenses and where the largest expenses are being incurred. And you can see, I think, the purpleish line is sewer and water, and the green is integration of cultures. So those are the two big ones at the town. And then it drops down seemingly for the other areas. The statement of change in net debt, the only number I want to draw your attention to there is that there was $5.1 million of capital assets purchased last year. Want to talk about cash flows? So operations at the town brought in $4.7 million in capital used, $5.1 in buying new assets. Investing is $2.1 million, so that means amount moved into GSEs or other investments. And financing paid down debt with $450,000. So net cash outflow from the main bank account was $2.9 million last year. The accumulated surplus of $87.5 million is made up of a few things. There's something that we call invested in capital assets. That's the capital asset value minus the debt that's still on those assets. That's set down to 78.2, right, is at 78.2 million. There are reserves, money set aside for future projects of $5.1 million. The capital fund has a small amount, $8,750, that's actually the value of your shares in Comox Golf Club, which just sort of stays there. And the operating fund is $3.8 million. Again, we have another clean audit opinion this year. No material misstatements, no unusual items, so we call it an unqualified opinion. We're ready to sign our report after council approves the statements, and we finalize a few minor things. We always have to get a few legal letters and other confirmations coming in the door. It generally takes a couple of days. Our audit looks at a few things. We look at the controls at the town. We specifically test those controls, make sure that we think they're working effectively. We sample transactions throughout the year. We don't look at every transaction, but we do sample the balances in the financial statements to form our opinion. We use a materiality figure of $300,000. So what that means is that every transaction over $300,000, we looked at the invoices or the source documents, and then underneath that amount, we sampled transactions. So there were no limitations placed on the form of our audit. We had accessed all the information we needed and all the people we needed to talk to. And we didn't find any irregularities or any unusual items, no conflict of interest, no illegal or questionable payments. And we are not specifically fraud investigators, but we keep things like that in mind when we are doing our audits. We didn't find anything. This year, we did specifically look at expense claims of council and upper management. We reviewed one for each individual, didn't find anything that causes any concern with those specific items that we tested. We discussed matters with Don and Richard, Joan, Janice, Andrea, Jessie, and several others. We'd like to thank the town staff for all their assistance, definitely helped with the audit. It goes quite smoothly. Do a few areas where we spend a little bit more time in the audit. Financial statement presentation disclosure, what it looks like when you see it on the page. We look at contingencies, lawsuits, and commitments, make sure there's no unusual things coming out of the pipeline into the town, and are no liabilities that are going to pop up and fraud there. We've had discussions with various individuals around the possibility of fraud there, nothing to give our attention. We confirm that MMP as an audit firm is independent with respect to town comox. We haven't done any other projects or any other work with the town this year that would impair our independence as of today's date, April 23rd. And the last few slides I'm going to take you through are that financial analysis. Most crap we're looking at is sustainability. So the degree that the town can maintain its existing liabilities without increasing the debt or tax burden on the residents. The first one we look at is we compare the assets, total assets, physical and cash assets, two liabilities. You see that ratio, we're looking for a ratio there to be greater than one. It's increased. It was 6.37 last year. It's increased to 6.97, so it helps you indicate that the town has more assets than debt. Then we narrow in on the financial assets, so those liquid assets, cash, and receivables. We compare that, but again, we're still looking for a ratio over one. That ratio has steadily increased for the last five years at the town and is greater than one. So it suggests healthy sustainability and means you've got financial resources available to finance future operations, not having to tax people in the future to pay for the Then we look at the net debt or the net financial assets, which we actually in a positive position, and compare to the annual revenue. So this is a rough estimate of the measure of revenue required to pay for past events. So this has been steadily increasing. You're not in a debt position, so you're in a healthy position there. We've included financial sustainability, the town is healthy and has been trending in a positive direction. Then we look at flexibility, so the degree to which the town could change debt or tax burden to meet its obligations. And the first one we look at in the flexibility indicators is looking at the interest charges on the debt and comparing it to revenue. So it's increased from 1.64 last year to 1.2, so that reflects the increase in revenue this year and, of course, the decrease in debt, but still moving in a good direction, less interest cost compared to your total revenue. And then we look at the capital assets, and we look at the carrying value, the depreciated value on the books, and we compare that to the original cost, just to give us a rough indicator of our, the cost, is the carrying value declining rapidly? And that would mean that you're not doing replacement, you're not staying on top of your repairs and maintenance. So that's been steady in around the 70% to 73% range for the last five years. There's still significant value in some newer assets, and your future cost of capital remaining is steady. We're not seeing this drop significantly. If you went on a large capital project plan and started doing tens and twenties of millions of dollars of capital a year, you would see that number starting to decline a little bit. It's been fairly steady. You're staying on top, your capital projects are staying around the same level, not fluctuating significantly year to year. So we conclude that flexibility indicators are showing minimal change. Then we look at vulnerability, and we really only look at one ratio here, and that is government transfers, so funding from the province or from the federal government. So this ratio has increased. It was 4.7% in 2012. It went up to 8.1. There've been a few years over 10% in the last five, so you can see 2011 and 2010, but it has remained low, hasn't ever gotten over 13.9%. So that means the town is not highly vulnerable to fiscal decisions of other levels of government. This was a ratio that we can see swing from year to year. Some communities it goes up 20% and 25%. Does depend on when the feds open the taps and start getting those infrastructure funding flowing. So we conclude that vulnerability, independence, and other funding sources is low. Thank you for your time. That's my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for? All good. All looks good, and thank you for your report, and thank you to the finance department for their work on making that out go smooth. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our CMP staff sergeant Roger Plonada is the acting OIC for Comox Valley Detachment is here. Talk about the 2014 annual performance plan.
Good afternoon, ship and council members. Just quickly update you with regards to our OIC. He's actually going to be out here on his own study trip next month. Inspector Paulson, who's actually come in from Ottawa, we expect him to be here in place talking to the United Party. So I am looking forward to a visit with him here for sure. With regards to the local census that was done here recently, there was two detachments identified in British Columbia, there is being bilingual detachments, and ours is now a bilingual detachment. As of the 1st of January, we are supposed to have four bilingual members in place at the detachment. We have one currently there at the moment, and so we have a lot of work to be done between now and then. The live correspondent available to the general public is going to have to be made available in the bilingual format. So that's something that we're working on. Our 11.6 positions that are provided by the town of Comox are currently filled at the moment. In terms of our staffing levels, I've lost two members today. They're due to retirement. One had 48 years of service, another one walked out with 38 years of service. And next week, I'm losing another member with 33 years of service. So a lot of expertise and knowledge and skills and abilities going up the door. And so we are working on getting those positions filled here in the near and near future. I provided two documents to you. One is the crime statistics for 2012, 2013. Second document is the annual performance plan for 2014 and 2015. We just look at the statistical information there between the two years. In terms of calls for service, in 2012, we had 1,800 calls. 2013, maybe we had one call more than 2012. So really, no big changes. The reds are the bad ones, the greens are the good ones. But based on the number of calls that are received here in the town of Comox, there are one or two calls that can really make a significant change here in terms of the numbers. The one that does let's say help is the break-in entries in some businesses. We had five in 2012, 30 in 2013. It did take us a little while to identify the individual that was responsible. We probably timed him to 27, and when he was arrested, he ended up again in federal jail time as a result of that, and all the fees ceased there. So hopefully that issue's been put to rest. Criminal code offenses, in terms of the total, it's gone up a little bit, but part of it is attributed to these break-in entries. So in terms of the crime stats, really no changes, no significant changes there from one year to the next. So are there any questions with regards to that part of the numbers?
No, I think so. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll speak very briefly there with regards to the annual performance plan. The five areas that we are focusing on are on the left-hand side there. The first one is high crash intersections. Traffic is the number one issue. is high crash intersections. Traffic is the number one issue in all of our communities here in the Comox Valley, specifically particularly around distracted drivers, and that's about to overtake impaired drivers in terms of cognitive fatalities. So we are focusing on those particular areas. Second one is police community relations. The third one is our political offender program. Nothing's changed with regards to that. Anyone that's on probation or on any sort of court imposed conditions, we are focusing on those particular individuals. At least that 5% are probably responsible for 95% of the offenses that are being committed in our community. And so they are already probation's on board. Crown offenses are also on board with regards to that. So these individuals come before the courts here. There's special attention paid to them and the offenses. The street-level drug trafficking, drugs, again, they're a significant problem. The gathered cases before the courts are in terms of grow-ups. I'm not sure where we're going in terms of that particular direction. We did have a short period of time where we represented some problems because Health Canada wasn't providing information to us about legal grow-ups because of the changes that were being implemented. And probably in the last two weeks, they reopened their office, and now if that information comes before us, we could at least make a phone call fight out if it's a legal grow-up. If it's not, then we could proceed with a criminal investigation. The other big success story there at our detachment is the proceeds of crime. Since the event prevented at our office, we see probably about a billion or two in terms of assets, lots of cars and lots of other property that were turning back to the province of British Columbia. And finally, the last hindrance on our list is vandalism. Not so much for use in your community, but graffiti and tagging is a bit of a problem. It's gone up probably 100% in the last year. So we're focusing on those issues. That's it. Just wondering if you have any questions?
Any questions on, yes, go ahead.
I just have one question. I would assume they follow the community relations perhaps, or maybe liaison with schools. But are there any initiatives going on locally to address cyberbullying?
There isn't at the moment. Part of the challenge that I'm facing there at the moment there is we had two officers that were assigned to the bike patrol, and specifically the schools. And I've had to take those two officers and actually put them on with the watches so that we are focusing, right now, they're just on the enable to respond to calls for service that are taking place in the Iva community. So it is something that we will reexamine there in September when we have additional resources being transferred into the detachment.
Anything further? No, keep up the good work. Thank you.
And Yourship, I will just leave business cards. I probably should have dropped those off there. My cell number's on there. So if there are any issues around leasing, please feel free to call me. You know my cell or my office number or email. And I also will leave a letter there with regards to the consent.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, the next delegation is Kathy Woodley, Comox Valley Council Canadians, who are bearing blue community resolutions for our county.
Thank you for your time this afternoon. We're here to thank the Town of Comox and this council for the positive steps you took when in October 3rd, 2012, you passed the resolutions to become a blue community. A copy of those resolutions was included in the material that we forwarded for your agenda package. It will be interesting to know that in 2013, the city of Burn, Switzerland became the first blue community outside of Canada. And also that in March of this year, San Francisco's council, in another step toward greening their city, banned the sale of plastic single-use water bottles on city-owned property. They cited the high quality of municipal tap water there and the importance of this ban in fighting climate change. On behalf of the Comox Valley Council of Canadians and the citizens of Comox, we congratulate Mayor and council on your proactive initiative of removing bottled water from the municipal vending machines in the Comox Recreation Centre. We understand for Mr. Canigan that there are no concessions or public facilities owned and operated by the Town of Comox where bottled water is now being sold. This is an important first step for the town's continuing progress to promote the drinking of Comox municipal tap water. We read in the papers about the upgrades that have been approved for the marina. This could be a perfect opportunity to increase the access to municipal drinking water through the installation of additional water fountains. Should upgrades be planned for the existing washrooms, consideration could be given to incorporating reusable bottle filling stations. The refilling stations on Courtney campus of North Island College and at Lewis Park Fitness Centre have proved to be very popular, and staff at those facilities could provide more information on costs and specifics. In the materials that we forwarded for this meeting, we have also provided staff with a link to further information from the Polaris Institute on retrofitting or upgrading existing fountains. Interestingly, I was up at, I know it's not in your area of responsibility, but I was at the Aquatic Centre the other day and found the fountain there, and just up above it was a large sign, a large sign that said, "Please do not spit in the fountain." And I have to admit that it didn't make me want to drink from it. Further to the steps already taken by council to implement the third Blue Communities Resolution, we're interested in the status of the public awareness campaign described in Resolution 3D. As you know, the key factor in the promotion of drinking tap water is public education. Successful campaigns in other jurisdictions have focused on the safety and quality of municipal drinking water, that tap water is cheaper and in many cases healthier than bottled water, that eliminating the use of plastic bottles is an environmentally responsible choice, the variety of safe materials that are now being used in producing reusable water bottles, and the location of water fountains and bottle filling stations. This type of information could be included on the sustainability page of the Town of Comox's website to increase public awareness. Another possibility would be to remind residents on an annual basis through the town's newsletter of the location of local water fountains and water bottle refilling stations. The concerns that we presented in 2012 regarding the energy required to produce, process, and transport every plastic bottle of water and the resulting greenhouse gases are as important today, if not more so, than they were then. The growing strain on our landfills and the environment continues to increase with every purchase of a single-use bottled water. We have included some further background material on the negative impacts of bottled water in your agenda package. In conclusion, we ask that you work to develop a plan for increasing access to drinking water through the installation of further drinking fountains and bottle filling stations, and that you consider our suggestions for increasing public awareness that drinking municipal tap water in Comox is safe, cost-effective, and better for the environment. We look forward to continuing to work with the Town of Comox. We are encouraged by and support your intentions of moving towards increased accessibility of municipal drinking water for the citizens of Comox and its visitors. Thank you for your time today.
All right, thank you, Ms. Woodley. Any questions from members of council? Counselor Price?
First of all, I'd like to thank you for bringing this information to us. Some stores also have other bottle filling stations, don't they? And there's some communities where it's a program that sees this part of attracting people to come to downtown and spend more time.
And that is happening. The situations that I've heard about are happening more common in larger cities in the States. But here, I know specifically in Courtney, that Zokalo and Marygold Pharmacy will both refill your water bottle for free. You just need to go in and ask. It's Okalo, you can just use the water. And it is something that we would like to pursue with local businesses to see if we can help create a list of places that you could take your water bottle in. I noticed that the Comox Valley Economic Development Society is currently selling refillable water bottles as a fundraiser for their sign project. So having places where you could actually fill these bottles outside of your home would definitely be a good thing for the public and for visitors.
Great, thank you. And I think we're in our next newsletter, our upcoming one, we will be promoting the use of tap water. Can we have an earlier meeting, remember?
Yeah, I would have to speak to our deputy clerk here. Let's do the contents of the next newsletter.
Just putting it together for sure.
All right, good. Anything further?
Just as a side note, I'd like to invite all of you to the Third Annual Vancouver Island Water Watch Forum, which is being held in Courtney on May the 23rd and 24th. It's entitled "Our Water, Our Future." And the lineup of high-profile speakers includes the chairperson of the Council of Canadians, Maude Barlow, award-winning journalist Andrew Nikoforik, United Nations Environmental presenter Jessica Ernst, silver culturalist Yingmar Lee, and Damian Gillis, a Vancouver-based videographer, is going to be premiering his new VC documentary called Fractured Land. There will be bus tours of the Solon River and Nile Creek Restorations. Attendance is open to everyone, and it's free. And I have just some pamphlets here that I'll leave with you. So we hope that some or all of you will be able to attend this excellent forum.
All right, thank you for your presentation. All right, we'll move on with the rest of the agenda. Two minutes of our departmental reports. We do a number of staff reports. The first one is page 45, and it's the draft 2013 consolidated financial statements. And the recommendation from staff is that those financial statements be received and approved by council. And further on that, seeing none, I'll leave the paper.
I just wanted to, I have a question for Don and Moreau. I asked him to make a statement. Don, there's been a lot of criticism in the newspaper lately in the editorial section about, look, governments with such high-reserve funds, you know, more specifically targeted toward the regional district. But I mean, you know, we're part of the regional district, especially with their capital reserve funds, you know, we own a large part of those. And can you sort of discuss the philosophy behind having large reserve funds when you know that there's large capital work projects in the imminent future?
Sure. The first thing to note, if you actually turn to the financial statement detail, and I direct you to Schedule 3.
Page?
Page 66 of the agenda. Is that there, at the top of that schedule, you'll see our DCC reserves, and then the Community Works Fund reserves. And what you'll note is that there's approximately almost $7 million of our reserves that are in reserves that are very specific, okay? The DCC reserves must be spent on future development-related projects, and those funds come from the development community when people subdivide or take out commercial building permits. So it's not like we're reaching into the taxpayer's pockets for this money. This money has come from the development community, and it will go back to projects that support the development in the future. The Community Works Funds are federal gas tax monies that come to the Town of Comox. There's about 1.8 million there. And the important thing to remember there is that, again, that money's coming from the federal government, and it's specifically tagged to environmental projects. We've got to make cleaner air, cleaner water, et cetera, right? So we're severely constrained in how we spend this money. Now, our general reserves, we've got a general capital fund reserve, we've got an equipment reserve, we've got reserves for sewer and water funds. Those are a little broader, and you'll find those on a different schedule in the financial statements because they're really a different kettle of fish. They're the reserves that were being discussed when Corey made his presentation. And I guess the point I'd make there is that we will be using those funds this year, right? We're going to be tapping into the general capital reserve bolstered from our utility reserves when we upgrade to works buildings. And that's going to use over $4 million of those reserves this year, okay? So it's not like we're hoarding this money for some day that's not expected. This is the day. 2014 is the year for that.
Page 65, I believe, is somebody of those other leaders?
Correct, yeah. And you've got about $5.4 million there. And $4 million is going to be used on one project this year. So there's a reason we've been saving our pennies, and this is the year. The other reason you do that is that then you don't have to borrow, right? And if you're not borrowing from the bank or the municipal finance authority, you're not paying the interest. And Corey mentioned that the percentage of our budget that's being spent on interest is declining because we're paying off debt issues. In terms of the other comments I'd make is that 2013 was a capital-intensive year. He reported an annual surplus of $3.7 million, but that kind of ignored $5 million in capital acquisitions and another half a million dollars in debt repayment principle, right? That this particular format of financial statement ignores. But we actually had to find the cash and pony it up. So the net cash outflow we noted was almost $3 million in 2013, and this year will be higher. So the net financial position that we have at the end of 2013, much of that will go in 2014 as we draw down the reserves and spend it on these key capital projects. But again, the point is that we can do these projects without having to borrow. That means... We save taxpayers' money. We save taxpayers' money, and there won't be any tax increase associated with these capital expenditures, right? This year, our taxes will be about $7 million, but our capital budget is roughly $10, and that's only possible because of some federal grants that we're hoping for and our reserves.
All right, thank you for that. What I really wanted to know is, why do we have $555 in the Olympic torch relay grant? What's that worth?
We're given $8,000, and we spent $7,445.
So we're waiting for the next Olympics.
Reserves.
There you go.
Take our part with the head.
All right, thank you for that. We move to the second of that recommendation. Is there anything more that we need to do with respect to the auditor's requirements internally? So council, well, this will go to council for next meeting on May 7th. Okay. Planning report, PR 14-6, which is regarding 2240 Comox Avenue. This is the Housing Society. This is as a result of the presentation we had a few weeks ago, and staff have provided a report, planning staff, the planner is here, and a number of recommendations. So we can certainly move the recommendations to that discussion, or if you wish to ask questions ahead of that, of the planner, you can do that. So what's your plan?
Let's move to recommendations.
Testing.
One and two.
We'll move them all, yes? That's okay with the secretary?
Yep.
All right, discussion. Discussion on those recommendations. Counselor Price?
I just wanted to check on 1A when it says the CMHC Level 3 Affordable Unit Rent Level. That's the requirement for all the affordable subsidized units. Is that what this is suggesting?
For those units to be funded through the municipal administration. And if still, if available funds only allow for less than 50% of those units to be level 3 under the CMC program, it would still have to be 50% at least that level. So 38 is half, so it would be funded 12 units, then the remaining 26 would still have to be level 1.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Now, are you ready for the questions? Hold the paper. Opposed motions carried. So that'll be forwarded to council for approval on May 7th. And staff are also looking for a motion regarding water sanitary and storm capacity studies or a formal endorsement of those findings and recommendations that's set out in the report, page 99.
Move.
All right, discussion. The reports I know have been available for further study in the council mail slots, but I think this report was a good summary of those three issues, and generally it looks to me that we're in pretty good shape and that we're... to me that we're in pretty good shape and that we're going to be able to meet these expenditures as we go forward with our financial plans. So I know that's taken a lot of work of staff over many, many years, but since you're the author of it now, Miss Collien here, thank you for your report and for your diligence in keeping this up to date and also the finance department for providing those numbers. Any further? Seeing none, a favor? Motion's carried. Again, that endorsement will go forward to council. Other correspondence, and we're not having any camera meetings, so motion to the hearing will be in order. A favor? Motion's carried.